At seven oh one, call to order. One, two, three, four. Done, you will be voting tonight.
All right.
As our designated alternate. So I'd like to go over the minutes of the approval of the December 20th meeting. And I think you all, most of you realize we have one era in it. And that is under Arnie Martell, the pre-application review.
Seven?
That's the era.
That's the typo.
That is the typo. The right number is...
Was it twenty-seven?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So...
November must have fired one.
Right.
I think Christina used the template.
Right, she just used the template. So that's twenty-two, that stripe, that seven, and it's twenty-two.
My wife gave me a pen and I don't write.
Okay. I've got a pen, but I can't write.
Can you send that over?
Does he need...
You got it on your wife then?
Yeah.
Did you?
That's your...
You have to be responsible for your own plan. The poor woman's already been retired for a week.
That's a personal responsibility, that is.
You know, that's why you need the right pen to water, to have rice to water.
I'll put it down.
Take it down away, so she'll look it back to you the next time.
Yeah, but this was the...
Right, no, I'm just kidding, not writing.
Yeah, all twenty-two will have... There's a lot that has to come forward.
Right.
A whole lot. Okay, but yeah. Tom did suggest that we get help from Southern Maine Regional Planning Agency. And we agreed we would do that. Tom is setting up a meeting, uh, Tom is, Ken is setting up a meeting. And we'll either go to them or they'll come here. And it doesn't take the whole board to do that, you know. Whichever is most practical is the way Ken wants to do it. So probably a couple of members of the board will go to Southern Maine. He's, he's setting that up. And we did, Arnie did tell us that we were all welcome to go on another site walk. And we all kind of went. Not this time of year, you know. Really, it wasn't gonna do it. And we told them we probably would not be ready to revisit this until our first February meeting. So that first February meeting will be an important meeting. And hopefully we will have talked to Southern Maine about what he's coming through. If he has the plans ready. And we'll take care of some housekeeping at that time as well. Yeah, okay. So, can I...
I'll make a motion, except for now.
We have a motion, only second. Second by Leslie, all in favor. And it changes. And we have...
You have the right paper?
Uh-huh. You have the right one? That was, that was the second, seventh meeting.
Right, is this yours?
Could be, maybe I just got some other papers. Okay.
New biscuit, new business. Jim Fisk. Come on down.
There we are. So, Jim Fisk from Nelson Valley Builders. I actually am doing a job over on Horn Pond. And I kind of took it over from the architects. They had thrown a really great set of plans, but they pulled the permits. And I usually pull my own permits. Once we started getting into this, I kind of ran into a few details. And I kind of had to regroup on what they had actually done with the planning board originally, the building permit, no man's pleasure and whatnot. Basically, it came down to three things. They made a few assumptions that I was kind of surprised, once we got into the place, that they had apparently decided that they were gonna save as much of the house as possible and just take off the roof. And basically tried to use some of the existing walls and whatnot. This was like a fifty-year-old house with T-111 on the outside that had to be replaced. And it was two-by-four walls. Basically, we had to rip out half the walls to put the addition on anyway. So one thing led to another, and there really wasn't anything to save to begin with. So what we really did was took it down to the basement level. So we're still reusing all of the concrete and whatnot. And we would probably have ended up having to do it that way anyway, at one piece at a time as we got into it, because there was a tremendous amount of renovation involved. None of the windows were lined up and everything. So that was one issue that we had to deal with. The other issue was, is that there was originally, there's a, if you look up on the overhead screen, there's actually a porch that was in front of the house. And in doing that, should I give her a plan or something?
I have the slides.
If you have plans, that's great also.
Why don't we open it? What they had done was basically said that... When they say they're gonna leave as much of the house as possible, they also meant the footings on the porch. And the footings on the porch were also like thirty years old. And they're not gonna go and take snow load, ninety pounds square foot and whatnot. So... This has been...
I can bring it here, they could kind of...
Okay.
It might work better, I'll get out of the way.
Here we go. Okay, so if you look at this... This is the screen porch you're talking about, right?
Right.
Okay? And I even have a picture of it, as a matter of fact. Hold on, sit this down. They've got a picture of it. This isn't the greatest show, but what this is showing is what the porch is. And again, all of this really had to be replaced, all the way down into the footings. And what happens here is that these piers that this porch is sitting on, they're not meeting the current code. Current code now is like ninety pounds square foot, the snow load. They've never had that until like, you know, ten years ago. So the footings have to be replaced. So one of the things that happened on the permit was is that it was actually stated on the permit that we weren't gonna do anything closer than seventy-eight feet from the lake.
Right.
Well, obviously, the porch is sixty-seven feet from the lake. And we have to take it out. And the footings have to be replaced also. So the footings aren't a big deal. These are precast things, you just go and you take the old thing out, you drop the new one in, and it's done. It's minimum disruption. And we've been really fortunate with all of that. You know, we've really been able to save everything. We haven't had to go and mess with anything more than just trying to put on this foundation. So I guess that's number two, is that we have to amend the seventy-eight feet to sixty-seven, sixty-five, and, and, you know. What they had done here, if I define it, is what happened last time. I tried to find it. Right here, the architect said, evaluate existing screen porch footings, posts, and structure, repair and replace as necessary. Well, you know, it was pretty obvious right from the start that you had to replace. I don't know why they had to put that in there. They made quite a few assumptions. One of the other issues that we had was is that in the foundation, the other thing these guys had done... This is the addition they're putting on, okay? It was the hole within the house, thirty feet, and it was eight feet out. And it was all covered by the thirty percent expansion. So everything's fine. I mean, everything worked out, other than the fact that they put this on piers for some reason. And I tried to get it out of them, why they did that. They claimed that they were trying to save money. Well, quite honestly, they didn't save any money. Because by the time it was done, all you're really doing is just moving this wall down to here and extending another sixteen feet of concrete. And I can put that in cheaper than I could probably put those piers and then have to go and finish up underneath the building.
And that doesn't affect the thirty percent?
That doesn't affect it.
No, no.
It's the cross.
Not creating any volume, not creating any area.
No letting space.
So basically, you know, that wasn't really a big deal. Because the way it was stated in the permit was is that the addition was gonna be on frost-free foundation. And that's what they called this. Well, full foundation is a frost-free foundation also. So it really wasn't a big deal.
Is this the end of the porch?
No, the porch is evident here, but that way. And see, these are the three piers that I wanted to replace. And that's the only thing I'm really doing. Other than that, I am gonna stay seventy-eight feet from the lake as far as any, you know, disturbing any soil or any of that. But I have to replace these three. I don't even have to pull them up.
Well, it's seventy-eight feet to here.
Seventy-eight feet to there. And I'm saying now, it's sixty-seven to here, but I wanna go sixty-five. And by the time the roof overhang goes on and all of that, and the hot water gets disputed, here a foot in that way, then I just, I just say sixty-five feet. So I guess that's what we were saying.
The reason why we had to bring it back to you is because your original motion was approving renovations.
Yeah.
When we got ready to modify the permit, it was a total done when we built. So we needed to make the minutes right.
Yeah, I remember that, it was simply taking the roof off.
Yeah.
And that was gonna be it.
And that was actually my mistake in interpretation, to be honest with you. Because I did know that I, it went to the planning board for cycle best location. To me, that means that more than fifty percent of the building can be...
Same.
Destroyed.
Same.
However you want it, half-full, half-empty.
Right.
But anyway, we went to seventy-five, probably. Because everything, we did save all of the concrete. The foundations are all safe, the septic, the well. We're gonna save the concrete floors. So we're really getting down to a point where it's worth saving. Everything else was kind of debatable.
And Ken wants you to be aware that while this could be a trigger for a relocation, because you're using the original foundation, you don't usually.
Right.
And also the septic system is between the building and the...
The septic is right at the end.
Okay, so if we're looking at this, what a septic is...
Let's get a better plan, I think I have it.
There's the well.
Let's take a look at this one here.
Isn't it correct? It's a septic at the bottom.
The septic is right around...
If I touch that, it's gonna disappear, not gonna move it.
Right here, but it's right here.
It exists. Oh, you know.
Yeah, right there.
And we're really not that, the road's right over it.
Exactly.
There's not a lot of places to plant anyways.
Right.
It's such wetland, it's really, you know.
But what about the porch? So, the porch has been there.
Why? The porch was original.
The porch was original to the, I talked to Ken about this yesterday. But it's nothing, it's not a new thing.
It's not a new thing.
They will, they will...
It was an existing structure.
The only thing they really, the only thing they really did add was this thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
This stretch over here, and they put a little bigger landing on this, number landing when we came out of the porch.
It's almost, we had a hazard situation with the... Under the porch, it was a hazard.
Yep.
It was not gonna stand up. But it was original to the, to the, to the building.
How wide's the porch, ten feet?
I'm sorry?
How wide's the porch, ten feet, four feet?
I think it's more like eight, yeah.
Eight.
Yeah, I think, I think about seven, four, six.
We can look on the...
No, it's, yeah, it seems pretty...
Yeah, because it wasn't that, that much.
We can look on the assessment card.
There was a certain...
Actually, I can send it right here.
Right here.
Yeah, you have one foot four plus five foot eight, so that's actually only seven.
Yeah.
Hundred foot, not as much.
No, seven feet.
And it is open up.
Right, so you're not creating any, any more volume?
No, volume too. That's the building.
That's actually, yeah.
Can you see that?
Yeah, see that? This gives you an idea of what we're talking subject. You know, this is, these are the walls that had been taken out. And, you know, all that T-one load was pretty ratty. And, you know, all of the framing on this porch was upstairs. But this is part of the problem. When you come into these places, they have to be covered. Those are the rules, you know, I mean... And if you're gonna be covered, half the time you're gonna take it out.
Those are probably like four-by-four posts.
Those are six-by-six. Those posts are probably the only good thing in the whole situation. Yeah, they were okay. Yeah, we could've saved them, but we couldn't have saved the foundation of what they were sitting on top of.
See, the porch is eight feet on the assessment card.
Is that eight feet with the overhang?
That could be. The overhang's huge, by the way, if you look at that, put over that picture and it all. You know, the support is sticking out so far. So that's why I think it was debatable, was it seven or is it eight?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm looking over there, and it's, and it's almost like eight-point-four. And that would, you know, if this is seven, I would think that that's taking up a lot of that.
Yeah, well, that's also why I wanna go sixty-five feet instead of sixty-seven, because I probably think it might end up being...
Do you need to have this?
By the time you put the overhang on the roof there.
Need to be that much of an overhang?
And I always get a kick out of how they determine where hot water is. It's not a known entity, it's very subtractive.
It depends on the time of year, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Jim was on the planning board, so he knows what you need to know. It's gonna come back.
Yeah, I am. As soon as I get out of this stupid business, I gotta try. It's not getting any easier. I thought it would get easier when I got older.
You thought this was fun.
Yeah, it just gets worse every year.
So you have to do that.
Oh, that's amazing.
So I think what the motion will have to be is that you approve the revision to the original...
Okay, do we have the dates of the original?
October, it's, it's on your...
Or October twenty eighteen.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't, I don't understand the ports, son. I understand what you're saying.
You don't understand why they said seventy-eight feet instead of sixty-seven?
No, I don't understand why or how we can allow the ports to be put back. It isn't part of the foundation. And it doesn't meet the setbacks, which is grandfathered. And I'm just talking here. So to put it back, once it's torn down, I wouldn't think you could do that.
It's existing, so yeah, you can.
But it's not part of the existing foundation.
It's what I was struggling to...
I mean, I'm not, I, I'm just...
No, keep it up.
I wanna, I wanna make sure that whatever we're doing, that we don't end up where you did it this time.
Let's do it.
You know, the foundation part itself, I appreciate it. But it's kind of like, the porch really isn't yet, they put the deck on.
But the footings are there, they just need to replace them.
But the foundation isn't there.
The foundation is, the foundation is there. I mean, there are, there is a foundation still there. The piers are still there. And that's the original foundation.
Right.
The fact that it has to be replaced is to bring it up to cover.
But the porch is not resting on the foundation.
Beg your pardon?
But the porch itself is not resting on...
No, it's got its own foundation. It has piers and, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right, and so if you're replacing that part of that foundation, then how can you... So the rest of it, you can justify because you're keeping that part of the foundation. So on this section, you're not. You're taking down that foundation.
My interpretation was different.
Yes.
I was interpreting this to be just a change in name of the permit from renovation to reconstruction. And I agree with your terminology about those old posts holding up the porch are just gonna be replaced by new posts. So we're not changing...
And we're saying to fix something, if you're gonna fix it, you should just take it away.
And we're not changing anything except operating to standard.
Making it to cover.
Right. That's how I see it. I don't see anything...
You're putting in a new foundation.
Replacing.
You're replacing, not putting in a new one, you're replacing.
But you're still putting in a new one.
But you're not, no, you're not putting in a new one.
I hope that'll be moved.
He's doing what's in there now. It's not like he's gonna put something he's thinking ten foot in front of it or something.
No, we're not.
As that would be new.
And I can use the same six-by-six post.
So he's replacing the foundation of the porch part. He's not replacing the foundation of the other part, so then you can argue to keep that part where it is. But for the part where it's closer to the water, the porch, you are replacing that foundation. No, not really the foundation. If you're saying those posts are the foundation of the porch, what's, what's down here on ground level?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Those are on sonotubes.
They said, okay, they are on sonotubes.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're...
The foundation for the two is there.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're on, they are on sonotubes. But sonotubes are not gonna take the current snow load that we need.
Right, but that's what I'm getting to.
But they are on sonotubes, yeah.
There are sonotubes, there are sonotubes here, you know, boom, boom, boom.
So what are you replacing in sonotube square?
They're the precast things that you see that have square bases on them. You see them all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
They're columns. And all it comes down to is, is that, you know, you'd have to have twenty-five hundred pounds per square foot. So that's all it's about. And if we could use the sonotubes, we would. But we can't, because they don't have...
No, because they won't have...
...a big enough base for.
They don't come made cover.
You know, and I guess the only other thing I could say was is that, well, okay, we could've gone and left the porch and replaced the foundations, and then rebuilt the porch. But it still would've ended up to be the same thing.
The same.
So, you know, like I said, it comes back to my assumption of, you know...
Wait, can you send that part in, Jim?
It, it, it was the same thing as the house. It's like, if I had gone in there, like, before we had even done anything, and replaced the foundation for these three footings here, okay? And then, when I had to go and remodel all of this stuff, all of these rafters all had to go, everything had to go, all of the structure would've had to go. So by the time I was done, all of that would've been ripped out, but it would have three new foundations in. So I guess the point here is that, you know, you would be able to repair that and rebuild that. So that's basically what we're doing.
So if you're going at it from there?
We're just going at it from a different direction. But it's still, it's like the rest of the house. It's all gotta be thrown in a dumpster eventually. It's either one piece at a time or with an extra. So it's kind of like you weigh that stuff out. And if there's anything I can save in here, then we would save it. But like I said, those three posts.
And I think really what it comes down to is... This, this really is a remodel and not just a, you know, renovation, a done one.
Were there conditions, were there conditions on the original application?
October, I don't believe we did have any. And I must, I'm not carrying my entire file, so I don't have my...
The reason I'm asking is...
It must be in, is it in minutes?
October twenty.
If we don't need any conditions for this...
Previous.
...application, then the idea that this is just the same structure, only nicer...
Right.
...statements.
Well, there wasn't any conditions because they weren't touching the ground, the ground up front at all. You know what I mean? They weren't disturbing any of the soil.
That's not necessarily true, Jim.
Well, that's what I was saying.
That's what, going off of these plans, that's exactly what they were saying here. Evaluate existing screen porch footings, posts, and structure, repair and replace as necessary. Which is what we're gonna do.
And I appreciate what you're saying. You know, I'm saying, we did, we heard it before, they weren't touching the soil at all. That's what we were told.
Right.
And that's what the man was like.
That's what was on the porting, so.
Right, but I mean, you know...
It's actually on October four.
But that's why there wasn't any conditions.
Yeah.
Because normally what we've been doing is making sure that stuff's re-vegetated and all that.
Oh, but, you know, and that particular area, I mean, it's crushed stone right now. I mean, it always was. So it's, it's not one of those things that we, you know, you will be ripping up grass and shrubs and all of that stuff. I mean, there's nothing under that porch. That's where they store their boats. And it's actually firewood all scattered all over.
No, I appreciate that, though. I mean, I install those things.
We're talking about a minimum disruption, and, you know, so like I said, you know, it's a sonotube here, you know. Pretty minimal impact.
But when we, when we've done, when we've done stuff, we made conditions when they disturbed soil within a hundred feet of the water to make sure it's vegetated properly and, and the stump grinders are there.
My understanding is that's all standard.
We have to do that anyway.
That's all part of the permit. We don't need to make that condition because...
Then why do we? We always, we always, I mean, we do it all the time.
Yeah, right. And I think it's in there, you know. But I mean, that's a assumption. I mean, the soil surfaces are already up, and, you know, the corrosion control mulch is, you know...
So I guess what I'm saying is then, when we're doing this, if we're really wasting our time putting these stipulations in on conditions, if it's all there anyway.
I can tell you what we did.
I'm just trying to understand.
Right, no, no, here we go. But this was on, when... Who, who, um... Application of God Randall and Linda White, blah, blah, applying to do renovations which exceeded fifty percent on the appraised value. He explained, because the foundation of the building is in good condition, in his, I'm sorry, opinion, there was no reason to locate... Ken Paul discussed it, and in his opinion, there was no reason to relocate the structure. It was moved by Tom, segmented by Leslie, to approve the application with the following conditions. The project does not cause any encroachments. Okay. The structure is renovated on the original foundation. Okay. The structure remains no closer than seventy-eight feet to the high water mark of the lake. That was the condition we put on when it was a renovation. That's pretty clear. That is pretty clear.
So that does not include the porch, or that?
No, the seventy-eight.
No, the seventy-eight does.
If I was voting tonight, I agree with what Jim wants to do. By the way, I'm just trying to clarify what we've been doing as a planning board to make sure it's consistent, that's all.
Right, but I think what, what my understanding of that is, is that that porch is all on that site plan, and that site plan was approved. And the fact that we repaired and replaced the porch, still, that porch is exactly where it was. So I guess I don't quite understand why we would not be able to get that back.
They need to show the additions more closely than we have shown them.
I mean, it was all originally approved. And nothing has changed in the end results or the beginning. Everything is still the same. The plan's right down. Everything is gonna end up exactly the way the architect drew it. I don't see what the difference really is.
So was it like an oversign with the number of...
Apparently what happened, I, you saw it, you're like, I mean, it's right up on the screen. The porch is there, and it's even lit, sixty-seven. And somebody put down seventy-eight. And I don't understand why that would be. And at first, when I saw it, like I said, I inherited this job. Normally, I do it myself for the planning board. And that porch would still be there if I had done my own permit, by the way. But, you know, the point being here was is that I don't quite know why that happened. But the porch is labeled there sixty-seven feet. It was approved to be sixty-seven feet. They didn't say take it off because it was sixty-seven feet, you know.
Right.
Somehow, why did they say seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight goes to the new addition.
I think he...
The border of the new addition.
That's, that's the point.
Now, I have a, I have a question. Does it need to have that overhang? This looks like...
No, it could have, it could have like nine inches. It has to have a little bit, because it's a screen porch.[1791.11] It, it has to have a little bit because it's a screened porch, otherwise the water just runs right down the stream. So we, we gotta have at least ten inches.
Right.
Or a foot. And, you know, I don't think it would have that much of an overhang. We're actually gonna pull it back.
Because even where it's got that brace in this picture, that looks like it's a good foot.
Yeah, no, it, it's fine. And, yeah.
And I mean.
Is it gonna have a similar staircase in the?
It's, it's actually identical, and, and don't forget, that was actually approved to have a landing added on.
Right.
With more sonotubes. I, I think there's something to you guys probably that take, look, I, I'm really catching, so we just brought it up.
Right, two more footies there.
Who's, who's got the combination?
This one, and working on something else.
Okay, see these right here?
Right, those are two.
Those are new footings. Those footings are no closer to the lake than those that I'm digging. So there you go again. Who said it has to be seventy-eight feet when this is sixty-seven? No, that's, that's part of the landing that you approved to be added on.
When did we approve that?
When we did the site prep location.
October four.
That was, I'm looking it up. Um, but that's, that's this right here, that little blue thing?
Yeah.
But that's not what we're seeing in the picture, though.
Well, you're seeing this footing, and they're, they're expanding, they, they got permission to expand this out. So in order to do that.
Oh, more than it is now.
More than it, yeah, more than it is now.
So now when you put that footing here that's already been approved, and these three.
Well, I'm asking about the staircase and, and the small lady, did, did that was part of the original permit process for the whole camp? Or you think that was an add-on later, so it doesn't really match the camp?
No, I think this is something that you guys saw when you approved it.
I, I think that was perhaps.
Not on October four.
Not on October four, that wasn't. I think that was added.
You've planned existing structure.
I, I think that that was, if, if I remember correctly, that was more of, um, a safety, you know, the only way out of this place is on the roadside, and if, if you're, you know, it gives you a second.
Yeah, you need, you need a second, second exit.
I'm just, I'm just saying, they've created, it looks like, to me, they've created more impervious surface since the camp was originally put in. It looks like that staircase was put in after.
Oh, after the original camp.
But, but since nineteen eighty-nine, so they've already expanded the camp one time.
One time, absolutely.
During that process, which is this structure, but we don't, we don't know when that was put on.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
I mean, because that is a, an addition of the camp.
Yeah. But I think now we've got a situation where.
I wonder if the board would entertain having the porch on the side of the camp, and there's enough room from the side setbacks. We could stick with Don's motion of the seventy-eight feet or, and the porch would be relocated on the side of the camp. They have to put new footies anyway, they just put them in a different location, and perhaps the stairway would be toward the lake as opposed to to the side of the camp.
Well, it still, it still comes back to the fact that it was there before and it was approved to stay, and nothing's changed.
We put seventy-eight feet, though, we have to.
Well, like I say, it was, it was sixty-seven.
We go by the minutes, though. That's our record, right?
What did you guys look at that, that made you say seventy-eight?
Tom made the motion, I wish he was here.
I wonder, I mean, I, I could watch the video and see if he's, I mean.
I don't think we had these plans to look at.
I don't think we did.
No.
No, it was a simple thing, we was, because they weren't gonna be.
Where it wasn't moving.
Yeah.
You know, we, we weren't asking anybody to move the thing, it was a simple, okay, this is good, they're going.
Yeah, but I, okay.
We did not, I'm glad you said that, because we did not have these plans to look at.
Okay.
Now, I, I.
But, but when you, when you agreed to have the roof ripped off, it included that porch? Or you didn't know about that porch?
I don't think we did.
No, it, it was taking the roof off, that's what we knew. And I, I think to what Gavin is saying, I understand that completely. If I was sitting where you're sitting, and it were my, you, you know, you were my builder, I'm saying, hey, aesthetically, I don't wanna look out on the side of my house. I wanna look out towards the, the lake, and I want it there. So we have got to come up with a happy medium here that makes us all happy. I, I don't want to do something that creates a, well, this neighbor did it, so why can't I do it? And I, I think I am leaning, um, towards the fact that, um, those sonotubes are there already. I mean, that's just my thinking, and they are just repairing an existing structure.
That's my feeling also.
I mean, it's there.
I agree with Joyce on this. I, I, I really do. Moving forward, we need to address.
Absolutely.
This, when we're looking through our zoning stuff. You know what I mean? But it needs to be addressed, so it's all black and white. You know, I mean, I, my, my thing is, Jim, I'm going back to my years on the zoning board. All right, the stuff that we had to deal with for many years, and this would've been an issue. And, but, this isn't where it is, it's at the planning board, and I'm new on the planning board, so I'm trying to understand. But I also wanna make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, and we're doing everything right and equal for everybody. And that's my only issue.
I think part of it is, you didn't do the plan, you took them all.
Well, I guess that's what bothers me, because this never would've happened if I got this permit. I, I don't know how, how this was interpreted, this was, I really don't.
You don't wanna be sitting there, right, and I'm talking about.
I wouldn't, no, absolutely not. I don't, I don't understand how this happened on your guys' move, I, I don't. If, if you were gonna add on to an existing house, that's the existing house. That's what you guys agreed to do. How it all ends up to be a new renovated house is beside the point. That is still gonna have an eight by thirty addition on that existing house. That was what my job was to do.
Brenda, is there anything in the interim that Ken Paul would've done or approved or said to the owners that we wouldn't know about?
I don't believe so.
No.
It really, because we did originally look at it as a renovation. If it originally, if, if Jim had handled this right from day one, your goal is to approve buildings no closer to the water than the original. And a lot of times, that's your motion, that, that the new structure ends up no closer to the water than the original, and you don't stay seventy-eight feet, sixty-seven feet, whatever, you just hold Ken and the builder to, um, keep that same footprint, that exact same footprint. To me, that's what you're doing, and that's just what you go.
Well, usually we do have a number, though, and usually, because we put that right in the motion. And I think in terms of using the argument about, because you're replacing what's already there, but if we were replacing the foundation of that house itself, we would be really looking at, okay, so we're replacing the foundation, how far back can we really get it? And we'd be looking at the septic and looking at the lot and figuring out the square footage and how we could get it as far back away from the water as possible. So that's my mind, that's where it's getting sticky.
Even, even if you look at that, the septic is behind the house.
Right.
How much can you, how much could you?
Yeah, I, I think at, at the.
But that's what Gavin's saying, if it was on the side or if we use that, you know, not, and I don't even know where the lot lines are on the sides or like, but I'm saying that it kinda does put us in the position of having to re-look at it fresh, and I wasn't here on October four, so to me, it is a fresh. But, um, so like, I'm looking at it in a different perspective, because when you are reusing the foundation itself, then you're looking at rebuilding it in the same spot. And when you start talking about replacing parts of the foundation, then you have to kind of back away from the footprint idea and look at how far.
But I'm not sure where we're placing.
Can I bring up a point?
Yeah.
If, if there had been an existing deck on that house, that deck would've been replaced. If the deck had to be replaced and it needed new footings, you don't say, oh, okay, you gotta replace it, get it out of here. It had a permit, it could, it was allowed, that had a permit at one point in time, and it, it can be fixed and replaced, and that's what we're doing. I, I just, I guess I just really have a harder time.
What, what is the, the, Brenda, the picture there? Because that roof goes right over that porch.
When I have to replace the roof, I have to replace everything. That, it would've included that porch. It's all tied into the same.
It's, it's all of your.
It was, it was all built together.
Right, the joints, everything are together.
Everything.
So, so to me, again, that's another indication that this was part of the original.
It's part of the structure.
It's being, it's part of the structure, it's, it's being repaired as any other part of the existing structure would be repaired. And the, uh, you know, to say, well, we can only do the top half of the repair, but we're not gonna touch the sonotubes or the posts. I mean, you know, we all know, you can't do that.
It's not a choice.
You can't do that, it, it isn't a choice. It has to be replaced. And I think therein, um, because it, and I am willing to bet with the placement of that septic system, you know, the, the neighbors, that's fine. But since that is the existing, I am willing to bet that is what we would call the best practical location for it, and, um, you know, and, and let it move forward, but that's one opinion, that's only one opinion.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, absolutely, the house was built, that, it's in the building.
It's a recent addition.
You can't, you can't do that.
Yeah. So, but it's, we didn't have this, we don't.
Is there something we can talk about?
I, I, but, but I think Brenda's got the point there. I mean, it, it, it was always there, it's part of the house.
What we do is.
It's been taxed forever.
We're fortunate enough that we have the assessment cards from nineteen eighty-nine, and that's when the law went into effect. So if someone comes in and wants to build, based on their thirty percent, we pulled this card to see, we don't care what's there right now. We care what was there in nineteen eighty-nine. They get thirty percent of what was there in nineteen eighty-nine. And that porch was there in nineteen eighty-nine. And, uh, so, if that was, if that's what you question is, you can, you can see, you can see, yeah, it's the thirty by eight.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm curious about the stairs and the balcony landing, which is a picture on the back of this thing that might, it depends on which side of the kit goes.
Same thing. The, the stairs just go, instead of going this way, they're going, going straight down.
Let's see. Now, listen, that's the different shot of the camp, because there's no, no sliding door right here. This must be, is this the other end of the camp? Jim, let me bring it up.
I don't care, sir.
Well, there's not enough room in there for a sliding door. Is this the?
There is something there.
What's going on with this picture?
Yeah, that would, that would be the face of it.
There's a sliding door right there.
No, I know, so this is the other end of the camp.
Yep.
From the road.
I think that, yeah.
Standing on the road, looking at the camp in this picture.
Yep, yep. No, that's, that's from.
Well, where's the sliding door?
It got lifted, I think.
It got lifted?
I think it got lifted at some point in time.
So since nineteen eighty-nine, this thing got lifted up, they put a slider in, they put a window in, and they put that whole staircase on the left-hand side, according to this picture, then.
Yeah, I don't know when that did.
Well, when was that?
I don't know, like I say, I didn't do the.
Nineteen ninety-five.
You should get asked, that's, that's all I know about that now.
Well, me too, me too, we're in the same boat.
Yep.
But Gavin?
Yep.
Nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah. So they already did it, an addition at one time since nineteen eighty-nine.
All permitted.
But they didn't create any more, any thirty percent. By, by jacking that up, the.
Yeah.
Volume in the basement doesn't count either for or against your thirty percent. So everything they've done has been permitted.
And that's why we can use that foundation, by the way, because otherwise.
Yeah.
We would've had to tear the whole.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But I, I, I don't know. That's part of a house. And the point of addition on a house. And the fact that somebody said it was seventy-eight feet from the lake when it was sixty-seven, I don't know where that came from, 'cause you can go up there and measure. And I, like I said, I didn't pull the permit, all I, all I know is I've gotta do the job, and.
And work with what you know.
The plans are done, and the contract's signed, and.
You really wanna enjoy this one.
We just got home.
We really wanna do this one.
Yeah.
He's gonna go home tonight and say, I'm gonna take up part of it, I'm not gonna do this either. You don't want these things to happen when, when Jim pulls up for minutes. No, sorry. We, we now appreciate Jim more.
I always appreciate it, yeah.
Oh, good, good.
So.
I think you need to hear that one about.
I know, I guess what he's trying to do is just in terms of being consistent in how we base our argument, because when other people come before us and say.
Well, the one thing we have to do is, is remember, we can't do apples and oranges, because apples and oranges are different. And, and this isn't existing foundation that was obviously lifted at some point, but still the existing foundation didn't take.
The roof is going the right way.
Yeah.
Going against the lake.
Right, the roof is going the same way, and it's, it's continuous roof. So the runoff isn't going with the lake, it's going more from the lake, so that's something you should consider.
Right, absolutely.
And, and just for the record, it's, it's, it's a beautiful flat lot, you know, as far as runoff is concerned, it's really well taken care of. There's a lot of tree growth in front of the house, the grass that you see is really up all the way around, there's no paved driveway. You know, it's, it's, it's really, there's a lot of tree growth there. The, the sun does not shine on that job site very often, I can guarantee you that. For some reason, I have a winter full of job sites that the sun doesn't shine. You really know why when the sun shines.
And this is one of the few projects that they don't have to remove many trees.
Right.
They're not disturbing any of them.
No, they really do pretty well.
Yeah. All right. And we got a motion, and we make a motion that we accept, we don't, is that how we look?
You gotta get the, you gotta get the feed in there.
I, no. No closer than, than the existing structure.
The original footprint.
The original footprint.
Does that work, Tim?
Yep, yep.
Is that the foundation of the O'Brien?
What's the question?
Is, is the original footprint in her motion, the foundation, being the sonotubes, or the overhang? That's why I'd like to get in, I'd just like to go with the sixty-seven feet or, or even made it.
Jim, would you ever.
Back another foot.
If we asked you.
To get rid of that overhang.
To not count that overhang by, um, I wish I knew the measurements on it.
Well, I can, I can tell you that it's, a, a normal overhang that you would see on a gable end is typically ten inches or a foot, okay? If you get to a two-foot overhang, normally that's so far you have to have some kind of support, that's why you see those angle braces. We wouldn't go two feet because we don't wanna get to that extent. We're using roof trusses, so anything that you're trying to go on overhang has to be built up and added on to the gable end after. So we're, we're not trying to get carried away with any.
So you would not have any problem with.
I'll knock a foot off of that.
Knock a foot off of it.
I'll knock, the problem I'm having is, is that with the water and the ice the way it is, I can't guarantee that I can get like a, a measurement to go by. You know what I mean? I'm going up to that plan right there that says sixty-seven feet. So for me to say sixty-eight feet, I don't think I can say that, because I'm not sure they're right to say sixty-seven, but they weren't right on a lot of other things either. So that's why I was saying sixty-five, just to make sure, but I will still say I will put that addition, I mean, the porch back exactly the way it is, and I'll knock that overhang down to a foot or ten inches.
Then you're less than the original.
And it will, it will be less, it'll be one foot further or ten inches further from the lake than it is now.
The footprint does count the overhangs, it does.
It does. That's what the sixty-seven is, is the overhang.
If the, if they're high watermark, then everybody else.
Is it a foot pretty close to my, like, eagle view?
So can, can I clue you guys in on something? When, when, when I have a surveyor come out, a lot of times, can I, I, I'm actually, you know, have to go and get like a certified plot plan to make sure that after I've gone, a lot of times I have to tear the whole house down, foundation and all, I don't know, build a sutter. Peppin's a perfect example over there, I'm not sure what you're up to, that's all we've lived through. But anyway, that, that was actually one of those jobs that the surveyor came out, three or four times, I had to make sure. I mean, Peppin was a piece of work anyway, but, you know, we still had to, we were really pushing it, we had to make sure that we were right in the envelope that we said we were gonna be in. So the surveyor, first day, he came out, he says, okay, so where's the high watermark? He's asked me, and it's kinda like, well, you know, I thought it was a little more, you know, obvious than that, but it, it's totally up to interpretation. And, yeah, okay, I can go out there right now, I'm great useful, they let the water out, so darn, the docks are all out of water. Okay, where's the watermark? Okay, seventy-five feet from the lake? Okay, but this is, you know, so that's kinda why I have a hard, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-five.
I'm not gonna ask you feet, I'm gonna ask you if you can knock a foot off.
I'll knock a foot off the overhang. Add it to the.
And Brenda knows where you live, if you.
Yep.
So long as you're, you're seeing footprint.
And you're not gonna, and you will not. And you're not gonna, and you will not exceed the existing footprint of that.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
We have a motion and we're having discussion. We, um, we don't, but we're having discuss, uh, but we're having discussion, um, anything. This is a different one, folks. This is different. We're not, no one's denying that, but.
But I agree with Jim on this high watermark thing. I mean, that's a cluster no matter where, where you are. That's why you're on the water.
That's why we shouldn't use feet.
You know what? We do though. I mean, normally, this is why I say I can't really do it right now because of the frozen ground. You can usually go out there and you see where the piney is, and you can see where the wash marks are. But you guys have seen me come back because I, you know, I actually had measured the, the high watermark. And then it turned out when the high water really came in the spring, I was like, oh my gosh, there's a cold. I didn't even know there was a cold there. The water was way over there the last time I saw it. So, you know, a couple of times it's actually speaks up for me.
The same involves river. It all depends on how much water they want at grade E's.
That's what happens on square pond. How much water they want on mouser. They open that dam and it goes. I mean, I've seen grade E's go up six foot. We've had square, 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 square pond, um, five feet, the sonotube's nothing. Nothing at all. And that's why I laughed when you said Peppin to the scats. So anyway, we have a, a motion on the floor. Do we have?
Is the motion on the floor?
By, the motion by Leslie. Do we have a second?
Do you wanna reread the motion for us or?
All she said was, accept amended plan and then under conditions, I had maintain original footprint, reduce overhang by one foot.
I'm not old enough.
I know. We need a second. Lucky you.
No, I'm, I'm, second.
Okay, we have a second.
I think you probably have to address the feet because it's in the original. I wasn't here for that, so it's a little.
I know, I was wrong with your.
Um, we have to address the 78 foot issue because it's in the original motion.
Can you save the motion?
This is our chance to not deal with feet.
But then otherwise it's still there. So what, what if we go back again?
It's an amended. This is an amended.
Was that your motion?
What if you rescind your original motion?
I don't think you can.
Can't rescind the motion?
Because, well, so normally.
Reconsider it?
You can't do that if the person that made the motion wasn't here to.
He's not here. But the 78 feet is still in effect for the addition.
I think that's the point.
It identifies that's not that far from the say.
It didn't say. It says the structure.
What the minutes say, where we're supposed to go by.
And here it is.
That's why we have to.
The structure remains no closer than 78 feet of the high water.
And it doesn't say the additional, no?
No, that's half the, that's half the we're talking about.
None of it's in it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I.
So the motion dies from, I mean, we got a second. We're gonna hold on it.
Well, I think we have to, um, do a little motion. I, I think, um.
You gotta hold on this motion.
We have to vote this one up or down and then go back and then discuss more. So all in favor of the motion as it stands?
I think we have to address the foot issue.
Two, one upstanding.
I think we can get it a little more specific.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, we're not gonna take two weeks to do this. So the 78 feet, to address that, and I am absolutely in favor of not using feet because the high watermark is so subjective, so subjective.
But we use feet every single time.
I, I know we do. And this is the show.
Because we've always done it, doesn't mean that.
It doesn't mean it's the right thing to do it or it's right back.
I grew up using an outhouse one day and now my kids never did and they would never would want one. I'm gonna change that sometime.
Or it's based around feet. It's based, so many. You've got a high watermark. You get your bat behind the 50-foot line.
Well, it's just that whole thing with the, the sonotube taken out, where were the sonotubes? And we just have a, we like to have a concise number. So we've done it pretty much 100 times, you know? I mean, I understand what you're saying. We don't have to do it with that.
Well, I think, I think we're talking that, that we're not putting back exactly where the porch was.
That's, if, if it was being moved at all, I, I.
If it was being moved, that would have a problem.
That, that, I mean, the footings are right there. I mean, in order to go and put the new footings in, you take the old footings out. The footings are right there. It's a known location.
Right.
There's no wiggle room above it.
Right, that, that's.
And one of the conditions was that there be no approachment.
And there is no approachment anywhere.
So that is, say, this is what it is?
Exactly.
Maintenance. It's called maintenance. I, I, you know, if you don't have a 50, 60-year-old house, you don't have to do something to it. We're doing something. And I don't think it should be all up to third and, okay, well, you're gonna lose what you had before. I don't think that's right.
Changing horses.
Yeah, except, I mean, we have the ordinance that if it's over 50%, then we look at relocation, yeah.
But you already did that.
Right.
And nothing's changed. Nothing's any different.
Well, because it's keeping the foundation, which is another thing you can use as an argument.
Yeah, but like I say, if that were, if there were a deck there, we could replace the deck. I mean, if it had a permit or something that was always part of the structure, it's part of the house.
Getting rid of the decks off in the corner.
Yeah.
I mean, Kenny's recommendation was that this was the best possible location.
It was.
And I honestly believe that we ought to take Kenny's recommendation. I mean, he's honestly is the expert. We're here to help, but.
Yeah, and I, I think, um.
And he recommends we put a foot in the water inside.
I'm not willing to make somebody move a house of four inches. I'll vote against it every time.
I don't think that's what we're talking about.
No, no.
What do we do about, so in the original motion, how do we reconcile this with our amendments?
Well, once we amend the motion, the original motion is gone. So, well, it, well, it is because the original motion is, when you rescind a motion or you amend a motion, vote it down and you bring it back. That's Robert's rules.
Start over.
And that's Robert's rules and you're starting over.
Not within, though, because we amend plans all the time, but we're not completely wiping out our first. We're like adding or subtracting or something like that.
I think all the knownness is that.
You replace the word renovation with a, with a.
Just wanted the minutes to say what it is.
Right.
And I, I think when we, if we go any further than that, we are overstepping, um, our bounds. But, uh, you know, you can, you can, okay, but you can, I mean, go for this, Robert's rules. If you are amending a motion, you vote down, you, you, you do not even truly have to. You can vote down the first motion and vote the amended motion. And the amended motion takes place of the original motion. And if I had my Robert's rules, vote Kayla.
Leslie, so why don't you just, um, make the motion like Brenda said, to change this from a, a renovation to a demolition and rebuild?
I make a motion to, um, classify this as a demo, a demo and rebuild using the same footprint as exists today. We need, we need, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Anything new to add to our existing discussion?
We wanna use the same conditions we had on the other motion. I'm doing a new motion for a trade person.
No, 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 no. The, the only conditions I would ask that we go on this is that the, you know, the original footprint is met. And that, that's what we're talking about. Uh, and, um, but the roof is cut back by 12 inches. The overhang, the overhang.
Overhang.
Yeah, the overhang.
And, and you're gonna make that part of your motion, Leslie?
As part of the, this one.
As part of the conditions.
Some of that will be there. And we have the motions.
Sure, I'm glad they didn't motion.
Yeah, okay. All right. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You were starting for that.
Yeah, you know, I should have let Ken do it, you know? I was just like, well, why don't we wait another couple of weeks, you know?
I, I will tell you the truth, Jim, that if it was Ken, I probably would have caused the same turmoil.
I'm glad to hear it, Ken.
Of course.
Glad you're shaking him up now, you know?
I think it was a good discussion.
No, you know.
It was. Well, you know, but I, I do have to tell you guys, you know, for 67 feet from the water, somebody should have picked up on that and they should have gone on there. If you didn't go and replace, but put an addition on an existing house, somebody, I don't know how far the house is from the water. And it, it's unknown. And it's right down the town cat's mouth for trying to know that. I mean, somebody should have known.
I'm wondering sometimes, we do the minutes a lot of times from the video. And I'm not sure, maybe Tom said the addition would be no closer.
But it wasn't picked up.
Well, that was my, that was my interpretation.
That would make all the difference in the world.
Because if you look at the way the arrow was on that cycle, it shot right to that addition. And then there was another one that shot right to the porch.
So we have Donovan recording exactly what you say, so we don't have to get.
So when the architect was here, he said, well, the addition's on 78 feet.
No, I don't think you.
We didn't have an architect.
We didn't have an architect. We didn't have a plan.
We just had Ken. Ken showed us real quick.
It was an architect. Oh, it was the architect who told him.
It was simple.
I know.
And I forget the guy's name. I didn't talk to him.
That was a husband and wife.
No.
Oh, no, that was the, that was actually, she was the land consultant with the architect and he was actually.
They came in and met with Ken. But I think because it's just a renovation, Ken didn't make an deal on it.
They were here. You just came because.
Wasn't anybody here.
No.
Okay, so Ken did everything and then he came in like he definitely made.
And that's why I don't think Tom didn't say the addition would, would be no closer.
I don't.
Than 78.
I think that's probably what happened.
But Tom's so soft spoken with the camera lots of times, people that watch it on TV. Certain people, they can't hear.
That's what, that's what I'm like.
Everybody's saying.
We've always done that.
Yeah, I know.
You're right.
As long as the project was here.
Hey, you could be out, Jim.
Nice to see you. We were, we were a guy getting more like them on.
I think this is going to work very excellent because remember, I'm not doing the minutes anymore. Christina does. So that adds another whole level to it. Now we have four Donovan signs.
It'll never work on somebody else's footprint.
Oh, well, you know, it's, it was actually a good break for me. It was like, oh God, the plans were all done, the permit's pulled. Oh, this is a great job. And then.
What's the saying about, you know, no good deed?
Yeah.
Fun. Ooh, this looks easy.
But either way, you guys have come and assessed it for five times. What do we work originally for?
There you go.
You guys will get your money out of us sooner or later.
Well, we will, uh, we'll be over and we'll watch and, you know, we'll have our little yardsticks with us and we'll. And I think it's good to have a discussion.
And it's good to be thinking about your ordinance and seeing how things affect.
But Jim, thank you for all your, um, information and coming through.
No, absolutely. And patience.
Yeah, it, um, it, it's very good to, to deal with someone to.
We can answer what we're asking.
Yep, yep. We got a lot going on in time. There's no doubt about it. Well, we're like a state above board. I don't know anything. We're pretty good about it. This misunderstanding is, I don't know what to do. We gotta kind of make sure we're on the same page so I can be one.
Exactly.
I don't want anybody pulling my turn in the floor. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I'm ready. All business. Zoning ordinance review. Report of the subcommittee. We got together on Wednesday and, um, Ken Pollard's giving us a list of zoning ordinances in order, in, in an order that he feels is the, um, most important, you know, to go through. And we did, as, I think, we were probably the only ones that wasn't here. We did amendments to the ordinance relative to timber harvesting. And.
Crosswalk ordinance.
And, yeah, and we, timber harvesting, you know, there, there's new, there's new sheriff in town in Augusta and all that. And so there are new rules and regulations and we're not in compliance as we thought we were. And, um, they really said you need to strike everything.
It came from the chart. We don't know if, that the fact that we had it as a conditional use to put a land man for work in the resource protection, that triggered them. And then they said you might as well clean up everything.
Clean up everything.
Timber harvesting of the ordinance.
Right.
More definitions that, you know.
I mean, and there was.
Yeah, we don't need them now because we didn't refer to that stuff.
Right. So everything you see here will be slashed. And, um, next week, we, when we meet, um, I'm not sure what he has on his agenda. But I think we're going to, uh, we're going to go through hopefully the less complicated ones. And, um, Brenda and Ken and Christine have come up with a wonderful idea. This is green. This is for timber harvesting. And in, in the, um, paperwork that we got, the, the other, the ordinance book that's not battled, um, we used yellow markers. Next Wednesday, we're gonna get different color markers and it'll be on different colored paper. So we will be able to know.
Wow, if you want a copy, this is a marked up copy.
If, if that will help you at all.
Yeah, we all got working copies.
And what they did is they highlighted what they wanted Christina to strike with yellow. So I suggest them next time they meet, whatever subject they discuss next time, maybe use a different color. That way you can visually see.
Yeah. Well, I'll never be able to make one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's up to you.
Okay.
But I suggest that then we, when we get through a thing like this, timber harvesting, that if the board voted on it, then we can put it behind us and just forget about it. And we don't really have to discuss it again till a public hearing.
Correct, right.
And we'll just move on to the next.
And then if something comes out, what, what I try to do is keep a history of each. This will be an article in itself, a history of how it came about. So that if you say you have a public hearing and something comes out of that and you do another law application, I will put down there that there was a change made as a result of a public hearing. So that way you can very quickly.
Maybe that will be.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, tonight, all we have to do, and fortunately you weren't here for this one.
I'll never be able to make it.
Oh, well, we, um, Gavin has pretty much said what generated.
It's not the first time, but.
No, well, what generated the, the striking of these things.
Yeah.
Um, so if we are all in agreement, um.
You wanna go back to me?
Yeah. No, I'm wondering, would it be beneficial, because remember Christina and I attacking this, we haven't been at your meetings, if maybe you should take a week to make sure that it does reflect exactly what you have in yours, make sure we missed it.
We can do that. I mean, as long as we hope.
Well, we won't vote on it for two weeks because we can't vote on this at a workshop. No, you can't. But if you did it at the next meeting, if you looked at it, make sure that we did include everything you wanted, that we didn't overlook something. It'd be better to find it now than it would.
Right.
All right, I mean, I just wanna get them done in a very timely minute. And I think Dennis's idea of doing it one at a time instead of, I think last year we did them all at the same time and it was very overwhelming.
Very, very.
And, and then by next week, you'll have another draft.
Right.
To take home and read and compare.
Okay.
And that way we can just keep the momentum.
Keep the momentum.
Funny things too. It's just like, just taking it right out of the ordinance. It's like, I'm not saying it's perfect. It's like gardening. Why do we even have it in the ordinance? Take that out too. It's like, if it permitted in every zone, why do we have any of these things in there? It's like, you might as well leave it in there so it's clarified. You know, this thing's like little things to think about like the impacts of small things.
One of the things we were talking about, you know, that I think you might have good input on, but, you know, we understand that you work in the data. We have plenty about childcare in the ordinance. But we have nothing about adult care. You know, adult daycare. And whether it's a whole business or it's a facility